What was that, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Okay, I would like to call the November 5th, 2025, Genoa Charter Township Board's special meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I would ask that you stand and join me for the invocation, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for your presence with us this evening. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we seek to fill this critical position. We ask that you bless this new opportunity with a spirit of positivity, peace, and purpose. We pray for a strong collaborative relationship and a positive atmosphere where our entire team can thrive. We also ask that you bless our former colleague as she begins a new chapter. Grant her peace and prosperity in her next endeavor. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I get a roll call, Patty?
Driver?
Here.
Here.
Driver?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
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 Okay. And with that, I would like to open the call to the public at 6:31 PM.
Good evening, Jim Carpenter, 4715 Still Meadow. I have three items that I want to go over. One is related to the video when we watch it. I was watching the meeting last time, and sometimes when we have developers in here, you can't see the screen from television, you know, when you're watching it online. There should be some way to flick back and forth so when you're referring to different things, you can actually see that. Second topic is the MyGenoa app. We get all these messages, and I can't ever delete them. So I get just this list of a hundred of them. Am I missing something on that, or is there a way to delete messages that come in? So I'd just like to know that. Thirdly is, more importantly, is this whole situation with Janine and the clerk's position. I did watch it on television, and I was quite dismayed on what I was seeing. My concern is that Janine left, made quite a few accusations. Some were disputed, some were not. Tabitha's gone, so we have the two people that really ran. Well, Tabitha ran the elections in the past, so that's a big concern to me. And Janine, I thought, did a good job at what she was doing in the time she had. My big concern is, have we fostered an environment in this building that is not conducive to getting work done? If you have two people that are leaving in less than a year, that tells me there's a problem here. What I would like to see is some type of investigation internally. I'd rather have it externally, but internally, that says, she made five accusations? How much of it was true? How much of it was not true? And if it was true, what action are the people in this building, management in this building, taking to correct that situation? Because I don't care if somebody's been here forty years or whatever. If they're violating the law, which it basically is, then they need to be disciplined. Does that mean get rid of them, training, whatever we need to do? But we can't have that type of environment here. Janine could, I assume, and should sue the township for the harassment and hostile work environment. She can do that easily. So I think that you guys need to get ahead of that and find out what was true, what was not true. The true things need to be fixed. And so at the end of that, I think you need to report out to the citizens. Because we have an elected position now that's going to be appointed. Nobody's voting on that, but you guys right here. So the rest of us have not, and we need to know what drove the first person out, what we've done to fix it, and why we're confident going forward that we're not going to have that problem again. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening. I'm here because I'm hoping to impart some, I don't know if you'd call it wisdom. I was on a board for four years, and we had certain ways that we handled certain situations because it helped everyone to be part of the process and to make sure that everyone had their voice, and it was done a certain way. If now we're in a problem with our previous Genoa Township clerk, and we go and hire someone hastily, we have to take our time. That needs to be done right. It should have been done in closed session. It should have been done with every single person on this board, interviewing each person. And that way, when the decision's made, you can say, yep, we really, really took our time. And I'm applying for the job, and I'm hoping you're going to do this because I want the people to trust us. They have to trust us. If they don't trust us, we have nothing. And maybe, I don't know, I don't even want to speak to what went on. That has to be handled, but those things can be minimized if we just take our time and give people a little extra to see that we're doing our due diligence and everything we can to make sure the choices we make for you are good. At this point, you're making the choice for all the voters. The voters are out of the equation right now. You're picking for them. So I encourage you, and even as a person who's applied, take your time and interview each person as a whole, everyone as a whole, so you all see and hear the same things, and then make your decision. And I hope that you do that. I would love the job, but I'm telling you this because I don't want any more controversy. I want things to run smoothly. I want things to be done right. I want everyone to get along. But the more information we give people and the more transparent, the better chance we have of less controversy. And I'm just hoping you'll consider doing that. And I may have cut my own nose off despite my face, but that's what I believe is the right thing to do, and I think it'll help everyone. And I hope you'll consider it. I am grateful that you'll consider me at all, and I appreciate all your hard work. I've been on the board, and it's not easy. People have no idea what it's like to sit there and have someone expect you to know a whole lot of things. It takes time to learn everything and understand, you know, what we're doing. But it's a big responsibility, and I appreciate you doing it.
Thank you, Debbie. Okay, that's all that was pre-signed up. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Karen Wilbanks, 2914 Russell Drive. I just had a couple questions because I'm not, just for my own clarity. My first question would be, how many applicants? And is that going to be made known to the public? How many applicants were made for the clerk's position? And the second question is, who is the final authority in deciding how to bring it to vote or when to bring it to vote? Those are just the two questions I wanted to publicly ask. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Can I say, can I speak from here?
Sure. Just try to speak up, please, so everybody can hear. Yeah, no, I understand. I understand.
I want to start off by saying if what I said after Monday meeting was not accurate or factual, I want to apologize. Otherwise, you know, I stand up when I say it. Now, variables are really bound by what's going on. We don't really know the actions and the statements, who's true and who isn't. I mean, personally, I'm not supposed to mention any of those. Okay. Well, we had interactions of both parties. I mean, really positive, good positive feedback from both people. And so there seems to be a disconnect, and we need to figure out. I think everyone wants to know where this disconnect, disconnect is coming from. I mean, it's, you've got qualified, caring people that seem to want the same thing. They just don't know how to handle it. So we're hoping that somehow, you know, you all can make this thing work. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. Colleen Quinn. I wasn't really going to say anything, but just briefly, I want to totally support what Jim, the first speaker, said, and also what Debbie said. And even my husband, Tim, there is a disconnect because we have had positive interactions with many of you. And it's kind of the he said, she said, whatever, the truth is somewhere in there. But it does bother me, like I mentioned Monday night, that we lost Tabitha as well. And this is such a critical position. I'm concerned with how it's going to be filled because I also heard, and it might be incorrect, that Kevin might have stated that nobody who ran before would be considered, which I don't know if I would personally agree with that because now that would rule out Debbie, and she could be great. So I think you guys need to keep an open mind. And again, we need a good clerk, and we need a good deputy clerk. So hopefully, you will give it a lot of thoughtful consideration. And again, if there is a toxic environment, which, I don't know. I think it needs to be looked into. Can't, it cannot go on like that. That's not good for anybody. So thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
What would that for me? The only other thing I'd like to suggest is that, and probably, I'm hoping you're planning on doing that tonight, which is explaining us how this process is going to work. That you've interviewed all the candidates, that you've, you know, done background checks, that we know everything that we possibly can know at this point before we choose someone. I mean, it's only been a few days or a week or so. So I'm concerned that we haven't done all the background checks that we need to upfront. So I'd like to know what process you're going to use as part of when you're going through this discussion so that we understand how you're arriving to these decisions.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, I will close the call to the public at 6:41 PM. At this time, I would move approval, or actually, I would move for, ask for a motion on the regular agenda.
I'd move approval of the regular agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. At this time, Joe, would you like to explain a little bit of the legal aspects of the proceedings?
Once the clerk resigned and that resignation was accepted, that triggered a couple of statutes in our state. One's under the election law, and it says that the board, this body, has forty-five days in which to appoint a person to fill the position of the clerk. If the board doesn't act within forty-five days, then the county clerk has to call a special election within five days. But there's a big but there. Under the Township Act, the clerk has to sign any checks for the township. It can't be delegated to somebody else on the board. It has to be the clerk or if there was a deputy clerk. So because of that, there's an impetus to appoint the clerk quickly because I understand, as an example, payroll is due on Friday. So there has to be somebody to, you know, sign those checks for that. Once a clerk is appointed, that person serves until the general election in '26. That person does not serve the remaining term of the former clerk. Whoever gets elected in November of '26 would then serve the remaining two years. They would not have four years. They would not have six years. They would just go back into the election cycle. So they would, you know, then serve the other two years. Any other, hopefully, I addressed the public's questions.
Yeah, absolutely. If the public has any questions of legal, I'm fine with you.
And the statute doesn't say how somebody must go about making the appointment. Any appointment has to be at an open meeting. The discussion and the vote has to be in a public meeting, which is what's going on right now.
As far as the voting goes, is it, how is it split? Is it like unanimous or a full board? Like, how many?
It's a majority vote.
Of people present?
Yes. Yep. So we need six votes. Pardon me?
There's only eight. Who breaks a tie?
I hope I don't.
There's only six.
There's only six, six that can vote. If there's a tie, the motion does not pass.
Correct.
And it goes back to the hopper to see if there's another motion.
Yes. But it will take four votes today if that's what happens today to appoint a clerk.
Is there going to be a process to say, like, these are the candidates that need to make, these are your qualifications for this position? I mean, just some detail of why? Because you need somebody with some experience, and we've got whoever is selected or appointed is going to be running the midterm, and that's kind of a big deal.
So, Joe, do you want to explain some of the limitations or qualifications of what we have to pick from?
Oh, yes, the qualifications.
So that you understand.
The qualifications for a clerk by statute is they have to be, you know, an eligible voter, and they have to reside in the township. They don't necessarily need to own property. I mean, you could be renting or whatever, but you have to be a qualified voter, and you have to reside in the township. I understand, I know that the township solicited applications for the appointment as soon as the resignation letter was received. And I know that there has been one or more, obviously, one or more applications for that appointment. How that gets discussed is really up, and the supervisor is the chair of the meeting, so he will control what is. But I suspect we're going to hear about all the applicants. Am I right?
So to follow up on that, I know the clerk has many duties, but from my perspective, I want to know their experience with elections. Working on, running on, that experience seems to be like a critical experience to me.
So the previous clerk didn't have any of that?
But she was learning. She was, she was training.
Okay, so you want the appointee to be held to a higher standard than the elected? Is what you're telling me? I mean, it's okay. You just have to know that, so we've received five applications. None of them have been a clerk before. Two have experienced working elections. They have not run an election. The deputy does not have to be a resident of the township. So we'll be able to cast a much wider net for a deputy, and I am confident that we will secure a qualified deputy and retain her. So what we need is somebody to bring stability to the office, calmness, professionalism. Some of the things that were mentioned are going to be addressed in a letter will be published this evening. It's time that we, unfortunately, are not fans of carrying things out in the media, but that's how we do things today, so that's what's going to happen. And there were more misstatements this evening of fact, so.
But also, the Michigan Township Association, which the township is a member of, right? They have extensive amount of training and seminars, written materials. And I'm aware that the clerk, Ms. Hunley, I mean, she'll go out of her way to make sure everybody's well-prepared well before the election because any hiccups here are just magnified at the county level, so.
We have had multiple active deputy clerks who reside in our township. One clerk as well, offer to help on their days off to train whoever it is we choose to be the clerk. And that will be invaluable. So we need somebody that can learn, somebody that can be consistent. Again, somebody that can bring calm to the office. So that is what we are looking for. Experience would have been spectacular. If you're comfortable missing payroll on Friday, I am not. So we do, we do need to have a clerk in place in order to function as a township. What's that?
Can we ask questions?
Absolutely.
I just had a question, something you said, Kevin. A clerk usually gets to appoint the deputy clerk, but are we going to take job interviews? Okay, because I thought you said that we have a wider net to cast. Well, it's really going to come down to the decision of the clerk.
Whoever the clerk is picks their own deputy.
And that's not holding on. It's just, congratulations, you have a job.
Yes, we have no say in the deputy clerk. That is up to the clerk.
I think the wide net comment had to do with it's not a, it doesn't have to be a citizen or a qualified elector of Genoa Township. So we.
To be the deputy.
We can pull from a wider range of area for the deputy clerk. The clerk can.
The clerk, that's, that's the clarification.
Not we, the clerk can.
That's the clarification, the clerk.
Right.
The appointed, the elected township clerk, in this case appointed, will have sole authority over the deputy position. So they alone pick the deputy. The board sets the pay for the deputy position, but the clerk itself chooses who is their deputy.
Gotcha.
My understanding as well that without a clerk, you cannot have a deputy clerk.
That is correct. Upon resignation of the clerk, the deputy clerk position also is eliminated. That also happens during the election. So if a clerk that has an existing deputy clerk is not elected, when they lose their seat, so does the deputy.
The incoming clerk would have the option of keeping said deputy if they so choose, but don't have to.
And I will say that the deputy clerk position was posted as soon as the deputy clerk resigned. And I know HR has received hits on that posting. We have not seen them. It's up to the clerk. Whoever is appointed clerk will get access to those resumes and make their choice. So, I mean, with that, we received five resumes as of yesterday. We allowed people to submit right up till the bitter end. One person only submitted a resume, did not respond to calls, did not reach out when asked via email to reach out. So I would not consider that a viable candidate. I personally met with two candidates, and I am very familiar with two others. All resumes were distributed to the board yesterday for them to read and ask questions if they had any. I did not receive any questions. Did anyone have any questions? Okay. So with that.
I guess if I can just comment here. I know the residents, the biggest concern is the elections, which of course is a huge responsibility of a clerk. But there's a lot of other areas that the clerk is responsible for. You know, they're the keeper of the records. They're responsible for the payables and the general ledger. And there's a wide variety of jobs that belong to the clerk. So when I reviewed the applications, I looked at it as a whole, not just who can do elections, so.
We would have certainly preferred somebody that had elections experience, but overtures were made. And there was no experienced person with election experience that turned in. However, we do have candidates who have run a business, assembled a staff, managed a staff, retained a staff. And I am confident that whoever it is we nominate this evening will be able to assemble a staff that will help them, you know, accomplish what they need to accomplish. And they do have almost a year to learn the election. And I said, as I said, there is a lot of help being offered from experienced clerks. I'm confident. Do keep in mind, this is not something we chose.
I do, sorry. I just need to add one more thing. When we get to that point this evening and we, there is a motion, I do need in the record, in the, for the minutes, that whoever is appointed clerk will be added to all bank accounts. And then that way, we can be covered and get the bills paid and keep the township running, so.
The person has to take an oath of office and has to post a bond before they can actually exercise clerk duties.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Just in order for me to get that paperwork going as fast as I can, once the oath. The bond will come. Once the clerk takes the oath, the insurance company would pick her up.
Okay, perfect.
Or him.
Perfect.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
So I've interviewed in my lifetime for lots of jobs. I'm not a job hopper, but you get laid off, a company sells, you have a new employer and everything. And you cannot possibly list all of your qualifications on a resume that's going to be taken serious. It would be ten pages long, and it's going to go right into the trash can. You know, I made a point to reach out to all five of the applicants today, and.
Did you have luck connecting with the person that I was unable to connect with?
No.
Okay.
I left a voicemail. I think a similar experience that you had.
So we can do.
Left a voicemail with my phone number and my name and the reason for the call and everything. But the effort was there. But, you know, I will say, I agree that on the resumes, you're right. It's kind, it's kind of thin on the election experience. But what's not on the resume is I started talking to the candidates. I know Deb McCormick here has been chair for elections, like the boss in the room during elections before, and she's participated actively in elections. I know Trustee Susie. I'm not, my name's not on the list, but, you know, I've volunteered and worked. I've done the sixteen-hour days as well. But I just want to say that I know Trustee Susie. He's got some, you know, experience working at the polls type stuff. And Deb McCormick here also has experience. I don't think that that was on your resume, Deb, but in. I don't know if your chair position might not have been on there. Right, yeah. I just, I just want to say, but in talking to the other, you know, applicants as well, I think I would agree that one of the applicants said, yes, I worked at a poll, but it was probably like twenty years ago, so things might have changed and so forth, so.
They definitely have.
In that person, it was not on their resume, that they had some kind of election, even a little bit of election experience, so. Just want to point out that you're right. On the resumes, you don't see it.
But if somebody had run or overseen an entire election, I'm pretty confident they would have put that on their resume, so. I think we have bits and pieces of experience, but I think our focus is more on somebody willing to learn. but I think our focus is more on somebody willing to learn, somebody that has experience in managing and assembling staff. That is, I think this has become a, a search for a person that will learn on the job. Again, our, our previous clerk did not, had never run an election. I think we were all fairly confident that she would have been able to do the job. I certainly was. And I think whoever it is we appoint tonight, I think will be able to, you know, do the same thing. There, you know, there's one candidate that is definitely a little, you know, not, not really up on the details, but maybe you didn't experience that, so I, I don't know. Please share anything that you learned in, in your questions with the rest of the board, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no. Everybody was very cordial. They were happy to have the opportunity. You know, I said, hey, my, my name is Trustee Bill Reiber. I'm calling you because you, we got your resume. I took a look at it. Can I have a few minutes of your time just to ask you some questions? In general, you know, like I said, I've been through enough interviews and stuff, so I asked some of the canned questions. What are your priorities? You know, once, if you are elected, what would be your priorities? A couple of the, a couple of the people, and I, I think, I think Deb might have been one of them that said, you have a staffing shortage in your clerk department right now, don't you? And I said, we certainly do. Okay, there's number one. Let's get the clerk's department restaffed again, because we, we lost a clerk, a deputy, and the assistant. We've got, we're at the bottom of the barrel right now. You know, organization, learn, train, all this kind of stuff. I was careful to let them know that, exactly what you said, Kevin. You're good for a year, and then you're gonna have to win an election to finish out two more years, and then the whole kit and caboodle, everybody gets out there and runs again for another four-year term. So I wanted to make sure that they were aware that, that this could be temporary, you know, depending on how well you did in elections.
Extremely temporary.
Yeah, but everybody, you know how when you talk to people, you can tell that they're smiling? I was talking to people that were happy to be telling, telling their stories and expounding on their qualifications. All of them had experience managing staff, working in the office environment, or even, you know, like you said, business starters entrepreneurs. But yeah, everybody says, you know, I, I'm really happy to talk, and I hope that you would consider. It was, it was good.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they would like to add to the process?
I guess, like I said, I went through all the resumes and tried to look at the big picture of this. And again, the bookkeeping, the budgeting, the chart of accounts that municipal government uses is a whole different ballgame. And based on that, I personally feel Rick is the most qualified here, because he's been here a year now and is familiar with the budget, familiar with the chart of accounts. And he has worked elections. So on that note, if it's appropriate now, I would nominate Rick Susie as township clerk.
Okay.
I would second that.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion?
Now, that's just the nomination. Joe, help me on the process here.
Well, you'd have to make a motion to appoint Mr. Susie to the position of the clerk position, but I heard it, as did Mr. Walker, as that's what your intent was to do.
So the process, I think, is complicated. Do I have to nominate first, then make the motion?
I think you just make the motion.
Just one motion?
Yeah, from what I've read in the, the statute, it's you appoint.
Okay.
So it'd be by way of a motion.
Okay.
And.
Then I'm gonna revise that, Patty, to nominate or to appoint Rick Susie as township clerk and include upon the appointment to add to all the bank accounts.
And can I just add that the statute, there's a statute that typically says if you're here present, you have to vote. There's this provision, though, that if it's a member of the board, that person can abstain. Doesn't have to, it's, it's permissible, and it's not something that the board has to accept or reject. It's, it's that person's decision whether to vote or not vote. But that will have an impact on, do we need three or do we need four votes to pass it?
Absolutely. I, I guess with that, you know, I, I will ask, Mr. Susie, do you, are you comfortable voting for yourself?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we will have a.
Then we'll need four votes.
We will have a six-person vote. We will need four votes.
Can two people be nominated? Can a second nomination be made?
No, we have to act on this nomination.
And then can another nomination be made?
Well, it depends on the result of this nomination. So, we have a nomination to appoint Mr. Susie as the clerk. If that nomination fails, then we have to entertain further motions.
Clear.
Okay.
Is that, is that correct, Joe?
The statute doesn't itself dictate how you get appointed. However, in rep, in running the meetings, yes. You would act upon a motion, and depending upon how that motion turns out, whether there'd be a subsequent motion or not. So what is going on right now is entirely appropriate.
We are having discussion, we are having further discussion before a roll call vote is called. So if there is no further discussion. Patty, could I get a roll call, please?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Swiger?
Yes.
Reiber?
No.
Hobart?
No.
Okay. The motion carried. Congratulations to our new clerk.
Thank you.
Or Susie.
Clerk.
Can I just add something? He cannot also maintain the position of a trustee.
You are correct.
So you have forty-five days.
We have forty-five days to appoint a new trustee.
Yep.
We will, that, that position will not be as time-sensitive. So we will act accordingly, though we do have pending actions before the board. I, I think it's important.
This, or will you do the appointing as the supervisor?
No, it'll be the board again.
The board, yeah, the board always appoints. I do not appoint. I can appoint members of the Planning Commission and the ZBA, but I do not appoint members of the board. I am one of seven. Six this evening. So, yeah, we will post that there is an opening for a trustee. There's not an opening until Rick officially takes his oath of office, but as soon as he does that, there will be an opening and it will be posted. I, I would certainly expect we will have a far more robust response to that. I do feel that our well was poisoned a little bit by, you know, information that was put out that may or may not have been factually accurate. So, there are.
For trustee?
No, no, not trustee, the clerk position. We cast a wider net than we got resumes for. I'll just leave it at that. But it wasn't for a lack of effort in recruitment. But some people were very hesitant to throw their hat in the ring, and many people were very scared about having to run again in less than a year.
That's why I made it a point to tell people, this is temporary, depending on how well you do in elections.
That was made clear in both our posting and everybody that I spoke to. And that then, when they run in August, they will only be seeking a two-year term. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of running to happen. Yep. So, this was not a small task. That probably explains why the pool was a little limited. The, a new trustee will be under the exact same, they will have to run in August. They will have to run again in two years for the, or, you know, they'll finish out the two-year term, and then they'll have to run again, so. It won't be easy, but I am confident that we will get a, a solid field of contenders. And I will also say, it was expressed to us very clearly, that people were disappointed that we were potentially going to appoint somebody that they hadn't voted for. Everybody here voted, well, Rick was voted by the people to a position on the board. So I feel we did honor that request, or that, that tact, let's call it. I am open to any further board comments as needed.
Well, I couldn't understand why what happened with Janine here, you know? People elected her to be the clerk, and it was really troubling what was going on here.
She quit.
I know, I know, but it wasn't just, I quit. A lot of stuff led up to that, and now Rick gets her job, you know? I understand this now, and I think it's terrible, so I'm gonna declare that I'm gonna run against you in the primary.
Great.
To be the clerk.
Great. Okay. Well, that'll be interesting for sure.
I'm surprised you didn't apply that.
Yeah, the position was open.
I thought it was gonna go to Rick. W. McCormick was pretty qualified here.
You didn't apply.
I didn't know it was gonna go to you. I thought we were gonna entertain other people.
We did.
He was already a trustee. He was already here.
You, you didn't know Rick was running?
No, I knew, but I didn't, I didn't know it was like a done deal.
Well, it wasn't done.
Wasn't a.
Mr. Supervisor, we need to be careful, because we can't use the public forum to campaign for someone, and we're kind of.
Okay, I, I appreciate that warning.
I'm just saying, I didn't know it was gonna go down like that. I didn't expect it.
I understand.
I didn't expect it.
Okay. We live in America. It is a free country. With that, I am open to a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Motion carried. We stand adjourned at 7:11.